Confirmation or roll call, Member Barber sends his regrets. Confirmation of the agenda?
The Finance Committee confirmed the agenda for November 5th, 2025.
A mover and a seconder, please. Member Chapman, Member Rahi. Discussion. All those in favor? And that's carried. Declarations of pecuniary interest, I believe there are some. Member Chapman?
In accordance with Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I, Jamie Chapman, have a pecuniary interest with, sorry, I put my glasses on here, respect to report Clerk 35-25-2026 community grants, specifically the sections related to Elmer Chamber of Commerce Heritage Festival. I therefore declare a disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof as the following. I am President of the Chamber of Commerce and an organizer of the Heritage Festival.
Thank you, Jamie. And, sorry, anyone else?
Member De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I, Catherine De Rosier, have a pecuniary interest with respect to report Clerk 3325-2026 community grants, specifically the section related to Elmer Community Festival. I therefore declare a disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof as follows. I am a planning member of the community festival. I do therefore agree not to take part in any of the discussions or vote on any question in respect to the matter and shall not attempt in any way, whether before, during, or after the meeting, to influence the vote on any such question. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rahi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I, Jason Rahi, have a pecuniary interest with respect to report Clerk 33-25-2026 community grants, specifically in s-
Why can't I get that out of my mouth?
Sections related to Elmer Community Festival. I am the spouse of, an organizer of the community, of the Elmer Community Festival. I do therefore agree not to take part in any discussion of or vote on any in respect to the matter and shall not attempt in any way, whether before, during, or after the meeting, to influence the voting on any such questions. Make it.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the fifth meeting of the Finance Committee as we continue our review of the 2025 budget. I'll have more detailed comments at our upcoming council meeting, but I want to begin tonight with a brief, a few brief remarks about this budget cycle. This year's process has focused on planning responsibly through a period of growth, balancing affordability with the services that make Elmer a great place to live, work, and invest. Our agenda this evening reflects that balance. We'll be moving, we'll be reviewing community grant applications, discussing staffing related to community programming, receiving an update on the capital budget, and hearing from our CAO on local tax rate analysis. These discussions all connect to the same goal, ensuring every dollar we spend supports long-range value for residents and positions Elmer for sustainable growth. This is also the first year of a budget under strong mayor power, so council and the public can look forward to the publication of the mayor's proposed budget next Thursday with the November 19th agenda. With that, thank you to staff for their continued work in preparing these reports, and to the members of the public joining and watching us tonight, and to the members of this committee. Let's proceed with the agenda. First item of business, delegations, Renee, Vans, sorry, Van Sevenen, Event Coordinator, Elmer Community Festival.
All right. So, good morning, Mayor, members of council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As you said, my name is Renee Van Sevenen, and I'm here on behalf of the Elmer Community Festival Committee. We're really excited to share our vision for the 2026 Elmer Community Festival and to request municipal support through the town's grant funding program. The community festival is a volunteer-driven event that brings residents together for a day of celebration, connection, and local pride. Our goal is simple, to create an inclusive, accessible event that showcases what makes Elmer special: our people, our small businesses, and our community spirit. In 2025, the festival saw an incredible turnout of over 1,000 people. We featured 40-plus local vendors with several entertainment acts, including a kids' own car show, live music throughout the day, and the community response was overwhelmingly Beyond being a fun day out, the festival has real benefits to our town. Local businesses see an increase in foot traffic and sales. The residents have a chance to connect and feel like they're a part of the community. Additionally, our festival's success allowed us to give back in a meaningful way. As a nonprofit event, we are proud to give back to local charities and organizations. For 2026, our focus is on enhancing what makes the festival special. We're building on activities for families and youth, offering more live music performances, and centralizing the venue to make it more accessible while supporting our downtown businesses. We're discussing incorporating recreational activities into the program to create more active, engaging, and experiences for all ages. Our projected budget for the 2026 festival is approximately $9,500. We're requesting a $1,000 municipal grant, which aligns with similar sponsorship levels the town has provided to other community initiatives. The remaining funds will come from sponsorships, vendor fees, donations, and other grant programs. This approach ensures that the event remains sustainable and community-supported. The feedback we received after last year's festival truly captured the spirit of the day. Attached are a few comments we received from attendees and partners in our 2025 survey. These voices reflect what the festival is all about: connection, pride, and community coming together. Tonight, we're requesting that the municipal support to help us deliver another successful, accessible, and community-driven festival in 2026. This support allows us to continue offering the event free of charge, invest in the accessibility and downtown programming, and provide a meaningful value to both residents and the local businesses. On behalf of the Festival Committee, thank you for your time and your continued support of our local initiatives. We're proud to be a part of the community that values connection, creativity, and collaboration.
Thank you, Renee. On behalf of the Committee, I'd like to extend our thanks to everyone that made this happen. The community event is just that. It wasn't just one person, it was a number of people and businesses that made it happen. Thank you. Second delegation, Kathy Vandermeer and Ron Sawyer, Elmer and Malahide Museum Archives.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mayor Cookett, Committee members, and councilors. Thank you for your time this evening. So, my name is Kathy Vandermeer, and I am the Office Manager for the Elmer Malahide Museum and Archives. I'm here on behalf of the museum to support our request for our funding for this year. A letter was included with our request that outlines why we are requesting the amount that we requested, but I'm here today to emphasize why we deserve your support. Community museums are important because we preserve local heritage, foster community identity, and provide educational and social opportunities for all. Our museum currently houses over 40,000 artifacts and another 75,000 archival documents and photographs that relate to the history of the people, businesses, and industries of Elmer and Malahide. These items belong to the Town of Elmer and the Township of Malahide. We act as custodians and interpreters to ensure the safe storage of the collection and to share the knowledge that our collection provides with the residents of our community and beyond by the way of informative exhibits, public displays, programming, and our online database. We not only collect the tangible artifacts, but the intangible heritage, such as traditional skills and stories of our past. Without this invaluable service that we provide, these stories and artifacts will be lost. Each year, we come to you to request the support that we deserve to protect your collection. Each year, we beg to be given a bare minimum of funding when we should be considered an essential service. We bring in tourists from all over Ontario to see our exhibits and attend our fundraising events, such as the Christmas Tour of Homes. We had hundreds of local visitors and groups from other countries in to see our exhibits arriving in Elmer, the Transylvanian Saxons in Canada, and our exhibit leaving Elmer, the Mennonite Migration to Mexico. These visitors also shopped in our local stores and restaurants, supporting the town's tourism infrastructure. Our partnership with the Elgin Stewardship Council in support of the Tundra Swan Migration also brings in thousands of visitors each year in the early spring from all over Ontario and beyond. Everyone here is aware of our goal of a downtown location, and we feel that there has been some confusion regarding the plans for this relocation. There are two distinct operations or goals concerning the business of the museum. First is to keep the museum business operational and continue the work that is so essential to preserve the artifact and serve the public. The second is to raise the funds needed to renovate the downtown location into a new and exciting museum that will provide safe storage space for the collection while giving ample space for exhibits, programming, and events. The money we have raised so far for the relocation will be used strictly for that project only and not to keep our current doors open. We realize that this project is taking longer than we had hoped, and we have run into a few obstacles along the way, but please be assured that we are still moving forward. We cannot move into that space until certain renovations are completed, including making the building accessible and ensuring the interior environment is safe for the artifact storage, example, consistent climate control, moisture control, and insect-free. In the meantime, we desperately need your support to be able to keep this town's history alive for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Owen, do we have a resolution?
Yes, so, the resolution would be that the presentation from the previous Van Sevenen regarding the Elmer Community Festival be received for information, and that the presentation from Kathy Vandermeer regarding the Elmer Malahide Museum and Archives be received for information.
Appropriate, we can join them together?
Yep.
Okay. Someone would like to move that resolution, please? Member Oslach, Member Cookett, further discussion? Yes, Member De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we allowed to ask any questions of the presenters, or no?
Not at this particular time.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, we'll deal with the motion then. All those in favor? And the motion is carried. Thank you. 5.1 minutes?
The Committee adopts the minutes, noting no errors or omissions.
A mover, please? Member Rahi? And a seconder? Member Chapman? Discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Staff report, 6.1, community grants, and we'll deal with, does it matter, Owen, heritage or community?
Either one.
Okay, we'll deal with the Heritage Committee first. And if a member has a conflict? Okay, we'll deal with the proposed, or we'll deal with their report to receive the report?
Yes, to members of council. Regarding the Heritage Committee specifically, this was a grant request that council granted last year. The requested amount has been reduced this year in half to $5,000. They are compliant with the grant policy, and we would recommend that council approve the grant.
Thanks, Owen. And members of the Committee have any questions? Member Rahi?
Thank you, and I have a little confusion around it. I am all for festivals and such, but having gone to both of them, I don't know why this one needs $4,000 more than the Community Festival. So, I don't know if, if a festival should need, one should need 5,000, the other should only need 1,000. I think it seems pretty aggressive for a, for a festival on its second year, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Member De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to respond to that, if I may, looking at both events and the projected budget for both of them, it's noted that the Heritage Festival last year was three times the amount. So, I could see them requiring a significant more, like, than the Community Festival, for example. So, personally, I don't have a problem with giving, you know, like, whatever is required, right? Because these community events are essential for our community. I think it's a good point to bring up, but I don't think it is something worth the Finance Committee's consideration. The only thing that I would note, and it's not specific to this event, but it does kind of tie into it, is I've raised this concern before from our previous Finance Committee's meetings when we've talked about grant funding. There's some applicants that are profiting from initiatives that they organize, and in my opinion, like, groups shouldn't be relying on municipal funding if they're self-sufficient, because I think it raises a concern of need and ethics. So, I think we should be prioritizing nonprofits, grassroots, new initiatives that truly require the support. Like I said, this isn't specific to the Chamber Heritage Festival, I just think it's something that needs to be on our radar, and I think there is a report from staff, so I might, I might, through you, Chair, direct this to staff, with that concern in mind, how are these revisions we're doing, are they going to ensure funding goes to organizations that genuinely need it, or like, what these revisions we're doing, how is that reflective of these concerns that I'm bringing forward?
Through the Chair to Member De Rosier. The revisions are what we'd like to do, and we'd like the input of council on what those will look like. So, we're proposing that the Committee request that staff prepare revisions for next year, and your comments are the type of things we could incorporate into those. And I was going to get more into that in my report, but more clear scoring in terms of different types of organizations, what they're proposing, different levels of funding compared to their overall budgets, which would help answer questions like, why does one festival need 5,000 versus another festival needing 1,000? If we, if we improve the policy, if we improve the information that we receive through the submission process, then well, council will have more clear answers to those questions. And that's why we're proposing that we revise the policies, that those questions have better answers.
Thank you. Any further questions? Member Oslach?
Excuse me, excuse my speech. I was a member of the Heritage Festival this year. We had doors open. We had 1,000 people attend our venues. We had 12 venues. So, it was a three-day festival. It's a Friday to Saturday to Sunday. We had a church service at the fairgrounds on Sunday. We had a wonderful time.
Thank you. Follow-up, Member De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a point-of-order clarification, nothing against you, Arthur, love you, but if there's a member who's part of the Committee, should they be declaring a pecuniary interest as That's a question for Clerk, sorry, yes.
Certainly, it's up to every member what their level of-
I don't have any financial level.
And it's a determination that the Counselor Oslach would have to make himself.
I know that.
Thank you. From my perspective, the Heritage Committee didn't have the opportunity to generate any revenue from the events that were held. They were, they were mostly drop-in, no-charge type thing, very little transactions actually took place.
I do have a separate resolution for this single item, and it would simply be that council approve $5,000 in community grants for the Elmer Heritage Festival.
Just so everybody understands, we're separating that so the other folks can come back and vote en masse. Can we have somebody make that, support that resolution, please? Member De Rosier, Member Oslach, discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay. And could the members of the community group that have declared, could they leave and bring Member Chapman back, please?
Yes, so, in terms of a staff report, the community group, as we've heard with the presentation tonight, they've requested $1,000. Once again, they're compliant with the policy, and staff are recommending that the grant be approved.
Thanks, Owen. Any questions? Do we have a proposed resolution, then, Owen?
It's that council approve $1,000 in community grants for the Elmer Community Festival.
Mover and a seconder? Member Oslach, Member Cookett, discussion? Member Chapman?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that any opportunity we have for our community to come together and celebrate is, is a good time, and I'm, I'm happy to support it.
Well said. Thank you. Further discussion? You've heard the resolution, all in favor? And the motion is carried. Thank you. And the resolution?
So, the resolution will read that report Clerk 33-25 respecting 2026 community grants be received as information, and that council endorse the allocation of 2026 community grants in the remaining amount of $5,000, $51,900, as detailed in Report Clerk 33-25, and that council make approvals of these grants contingent upon confirmation that each applicant will provide recognition of the town of Elmer's financial contribution and its programming materials and advertising in a manner appropriate for the contribution and satisfactory to the town's policies, as verified by staff. And that staff be directed to prepare a report for council consideration in the 2026, recommending revisions to the community grant policy, including the development of a more robust evaluation framework, the removal of corporate grants, and the establishment of distinct categories for community events, projects, and capital works grants with implementation targets for the 2027 intake year.
Thanks, Owen. You folks have heard the, the resolution. Can we have a mover and a seconder, please? Member Chapman? And a seconder? Member Cookett? And discussion? Member Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly support the recommendation of staff for this. Especially like the idea that there will be revisions to our grant policy, which includes more stringent kinds of adjustments, or stringent kinds of investigations, so thank you very much.
Member De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to address a concern I have with one of the applicants. While I appreciate the intent behind supporting educational and youth-oriented initiatives, I do have concerns regarding the eligibility of the junior achievement request and whether it aligns with the intent of our grant program. Upon reviewing junior achievement- Upon reviewing Junior Achievement Southwestern Ontario's application, it's noted that the organization operates with an annual budget of approximately 1.3 million, with nearly 70% allocated to wages, salaries, benefits, professional fees, and travel. This raises questions about the proportion of funding that directly supports programming versus administrative costs. Furthermore, this is not a localized organization, meaning that funds provided would not remain within our community. In follow-up discussions with the applicant, I sought clarification on local participation. I was advised that Assumption Catholic School is the only current, only current school registered, and that participation is dependent on securing a local representative. When I spoke to the principal of Assumption, I was informed that the activity was a single-day event. Last year, Summer's Corners was the only participating school. Additionally, when I asked which other municipalities provide funding, the examples given included Brant County, Chatham Kent, the City of Kitchener, and the City of Waterloo, none of which are rural municipalities comparable to ours. While I respect the mission and values of junior achievement work, I believe our limited grant funds would have greater impact if directed towards local organizations such as the museum, the cemetery, or Family Central, where the benefits remain rooted in our community. With that context in mind, I would like to put a motion forward that council revise the recommendations to remove or significantly decrease the junior achievements contribution and relocate the balance accordingly.
Thank you. Owen, did you have a follow-up to that question? The criteria?
I was just pulling it up there. It did relate to programming specifically within Elmer. And it related, at least in the application, they stated that it would be a multi-day event in the coming year or multiple sessions. I don't have it in front of me. It was either four or five, each servicing 125 students. It's what their application said. But certainly, it's up to council to determine which, sorry, the finance committee, how you would like to proceed.
Thank you. Member D'Azrozier?
If I may just follow up for clarification, I did speak directly to Megan, who was the applicant, and I have an email from her stating that Assumption Catholic School is the only school doing it this year. And I did speak to Jim Naffin, who is the principal, who confirmed it as a one-day event. So my concern that I have is this council is giving $5,000 for a one-day event. So like I said, I appreciate the mission and the value of this organization, but I don't see the value of that much money going towards an organization such as that, especially when they operate with a $1.3 million budget each year. I think it would be much better directed towards our local organizations here in our community.
Member Rahi?
It's always, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, it's always a tricky, tricky one talking about this because we talk about huge numbers and then we come down to this and we're nickel and diamond over shit. It's never good to pull anything from anywhere, but if what Member D'Azrozier is saying is true, I totally support. And it's not that I'm disagreeing or saying you're lying. But I totally support moving that $5,000 to the, to the museum. I, that is, I'm okay with that.
Member Chapman?
Through you, Chair. I have to agree as well. When I read this, I know that it's a good program, but they have many avenues for funding, and I don't think that council is the place for it. I'd rather see it go to the museum.
Member Oslaj?
Mr. Chair, I agree with Counselor Chapman and Member, uh, Ri, Ri, and I'm agreeing with Member D'Azrozier. The $5,000 should go to the museum.
Member Cookett?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. When I first looked at this application, I looked at the 125 students being affected and everything else, but you, you know, Member D'Azrozier has done the research on this and it's only going to one school. So I basically agree with her. $5,000 is a lot of money for one day. And so again, the museum, you know, requires the money. So it's a great idea to take it away from the junior achievement and give it to the museum. Thank you.
Andy?
Sorry to interject, Mr. Chair, but I want to thank Counselor D'Azrozier for identifying this. And certainly, as we go forward and we redo the revision of the policy, we will make sure to have wording in there that if somebody doesn't fulfill what's in their application, they're not, they're not going to get funding ever again. So we got to be very clear because sometimes people do put in applications that aren't, aren't reflective of the programming they delivered. And it's important that the policy revision has us double-checking afterwards and making sure that if that happens, it's not going to be on a recurring basis.
Thank you. Then in this particular case, if someone would like to make a motion that the $5,000 be removed from the junior achievement and move it to the museum. Is that correct? Member D'Azrozier, Member Oslaj? Further discussion? And we'll call a vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And the, back to the original motion now with the amendment to change the museums by increasing it $5,000. Further discussion on the rest of the applicants? Okay, it's already moved and seconded. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. 6.1.2, Community Program Assistant Role Conversion. Suzie, are you taking that one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you to members of the Finance Committee. This evening, I brought a report forward to the Finance Committee recommending the conversion of the part-time community programming assistant to a full-time community recreation and culture programmer with an anticipated start date of January 2026. This recommendation follows the success of the current part-time role, which was established in 2024 to help expand recreational programming, events, and community partnerships across Elmer. Since its introduction, the position has played a key role in launching and coordinating new recreational programs and initiatives while supporting community events and partnerships. However, as Elmer's recreation and culture portfolio continues to grow, the current part-time hours are no longer sufficient to meet the community demand or administrative needs. The proposed conversion would expand the role from 20 to 35 hours per week and update the title to Community Recreation and Culture Programmer to reflect its broader responsibilities. So the expanded position will take on duties currently shared with legislative services such as coordinating special events and maintaining a consistent town presence at community functions, overseeing Old Town Hall, facility coordination, liaising with user groups, supporting volunteer engagement, recognition, and recruitment as well. This realignment improves efficiencies, efficiency by allowing legislative services to focus on governance and policy work while strengthening the recreation and culture team's community-facing capacity. The cost of converting this position full-time is estimated between $20,000, 20 to 25K for a total annual salary of approximately 60,000 to 70,000. While this increase will not be offset directly by program revenue, the change will support greater program consistency, increased partnerships, and expanded community participation opportunities. It also, this, this conversion also aligns with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which emphasized importance of sustainable staffing and expanded recreational access for residents of all ages. So the conversion of the part-time role to a full-time community recreation and culture programmer is a strategic, cost-effective, and proactive adjustment that strengthens municipal, municipal capacity and community service delivery. And staff respectfully recommend that council approve the conversion effective January 2026 with recruitment to begin later this year. Thanks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Suzie. We have a proposed resolution.
To receive the report? That Report Recreation 10-25 respecting the Community Programming Assistant Role Conversion be received for information and that council endorse the conversion of the part-time community programming assistant role to a new full-time community recreation and culture programmer. Staff position with an anticipated start date of January 2026.
Thanks, Owen. A mover and a seconder, please? Member Chapman? Member D'Azrozier? And discussion. Member D'Azrozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we hired the manager of Parks and Recreation in 2023, the role included developing, overseeing recreation programming, community engagement, and event coordination. The new programmer position now lists many of those same functions, which has led to public questions about overlap and whether this represents a duplication of work. I want to ensure that we explain to residents that this is an efficiency measure, not a redundancy or a correction of an earlier hiring. So for the public record, could staff clarify what has changed operationally to warrant this position?
Thank you. Suzie?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Member D'Azrozier. And I can, hopefully, we can team sport through the CIO and Director of Legislative Services as well. Certainly, we're a small but mighty recreation department, so I'm, we're a department of two right now, myself and a part-time staff, a 20-hour part-time staff. So moving along strategic initiatives comes across my desks. Plus, our part-time position right now is very boots-on-the-ground. We're in the high school right now, offering programming Friday evenings. Our seniors' community grant workshops need staff there to, to run the programming. So having, it's certainly, it's certainly a position that I'd have, I'd have to work closely with, that we'd have to be in alignment with, but it'd be more like developing strategic programming and then this, this position seeing it through. So really being boots-on-the-ground, someone that can take those ideas, those important elements of our master plan and our strategic priorities and see them through. Another key element too is, which is different than the current, the current role is, is assisting with some of the responsibilities that were within Legislative Services Department. So as our recreational needs have grown and as we've grown programming and services, our needs and our kind of demands, I suppose, put on Legislative Services have increased. So if we, if this position can help increase that capacity where we haven't, in the current part-time role, take on some, some assistance with Old Town Hall, as well as being boots-on-the-ground for community festivals and the Heritage Festival, like community-minded activities. So we can actually help coordinate that. Certainly, certainly is an, is an add-on, not a duplication. We can just do so much more. We, we could do so much more. Thank you.
And perhaps I can just add for the public too as well. This started off as a part-time position in September of 2024. And then during the last budget session, due to efficiencies through modernization, council actually reduced a full-time staff position that put additional pressures on Legislative Services. And so now we're losing the part-time position and we're bringing on a full-time position. So essentially, the one way I'd communicate this to the public is it, we have had a bit of a vacancy for almost a year, but we're just returning to our normal headcount. This isn't really a new staff member, if that helps.
Follow-up, Member D'Azrozier?
Just a follow-up and hopefully Andy can substantiate this. We've also had staff that have left and, and we've had staff that have moved up, right? So it's, we're, it's not that we're adding a position, it's that we've had a shuffle. So I was hoping you would clarify that as well too, so.
Member Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Suzie. So this, this position, would it be like not just a nine-to-five or nine-to-four? Like it would be kind of, I'll call it after-hours on weekends and, and that type of stuff, trying to be actually there and involved with the stuff that is happening and the programming, correct?
Suzie?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Member Rahi. Absolutely. That's recreation. We go to work when other people come home from banker's hour jobs. So it's, if anyone's looking for a nine-to-five, recreation isn't the gig for you, right? It's a session-based quite often. You can have a consistent schedule for eight weeks and then you have a weekend event or an after-hours event. So you're right, it's, it's very, it varies.
Thank you. Any other questions? From my perspective, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan clearly indicated that the people wanted enhancement in recreational opportunities. This is another tool in that toolbox. You can't make it happen if you don't have people making things happen. Okay, we'll call a vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. 6.1.3, Capital Budget Update. Heather, I'm assuming?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you and the members of the committee, the mayor and staff have estimated the final capital and discretionary budget for council consideration for 2026 at around 8.029 million. So that would, in addition, we would have carry-forward projects for 2025 that will carry forward to 2026. So those will still be changing as we get invoices in before year-end. So we're still pending PSB and ECC board approval, but we have updated those estimates in this file. So estimate, estimates also have been included for 2027 to 2030, just for planning purposes. So for 2026, the amount for Parks and Recreation, these transfers between reserves, between Parks, Recs, and ECC look to be at around 797,000 now because we've increased through committee resolution, the 10,000 that was in Parks Rehab to 40,000 for 2026. We also have included the estimates for the ECC board. The team has went through and, and provided their wish list to the board, which hasn't been approved yet, so that this file also has been updated for that. The other good news story about this budget, just recently, we've been able to announce that we have additional OSIF funding of $57,744 for 2026, which will allow us to increase the sidewalk upgrades budget so that it will be directly paid by OSIF. So instead of just doing walnut to spruce, and it would only be really one year's worth of, of sidewalk funding, it would, essentially, if we did that, it would only create another missing link. So Terry thought, you know, let's get some economies of scale and see if we can't get it, the sidewalk extended from walnut to beach. So that ends up at the other side of the GeoRail crossing. He's already got GeoRail crossing approval. And this does also meet the highest-ranked needs, closing this missing link. Again, another, another great news on this is that it's, it's not hitting the levy at all. So this is a obligatory grant funding. And in addition, Terry and Adrian have beat all the other municipalities out by getting these tenders out. So we should be able to see great pricing on this program. So with all of the grant funding that we've received for this council and this committee in the past three years, it's allowed us to fund this capital year from reserves again at this point. And if anybody has any detailed questions about anything, I'll try my best to answer.
Thank you. Procedurally wise, can we have someone move that the, this report be received? Member Cookett, Member Chapman? And discussion. Member D'Azrozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Referring to the 10-year capital plan document, it's noticed that cost figures projected years out are based on today's financial estimates. I don't know if staff are able to clarify or not, but if we're, if we're planning expenses beyond the next year or two, wouldn't it be more accurate to include projected inflation to ensure the municipality is better financially prepared?
Heather?
Great question. Actually, these estimates have been provided in conjunction with our asset management plan. So Terry does flex certain aspects of asphalt, road composition for future values. So every year is a part of our asset management plan update. We update those future projections. So anything past, you know, year four of the, the first, or anything past 2030 really, has been flexed in some cases for those. If council wishes, we could use an inflation model and we can update that every year through this capital plan and we can identify that, that inflationary figure if that's council's wish.
Thank you. Member D'Azrozier, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, I just, I mean, I guess I would ask council now whether or not they wish to do that. Like I feel, like I said, the first couple of years, that's, I think it's a good ballpark. But then even if we look at 2030, like that's, for, for years from now, current inflation rate is 2.5, so we're looking at another potential 10%.
So we're looking at another potential 10% of costs. Again, I'm not an accountant, so maybe I'm wrong. You can feel free to jump in here. I would be curious to see what this council feels like. If it was me budgeting my own personal home budget, I would be. But I'll let council go from there and see what they think.
Again, whatever you would like as a committee, we can change the model. We can add an inflationary index to that. That's not an issue. But basically, what we do every year is we recut the asset management plan, put these numbers back through the asset management plan as they change, based on real asphalt figures, real water main figures. As we get more information, a lot of this information is also, you know, budgetary because we don't know some of the underground infrastructure yet. So as, you know, we get the scans done by the water and the sewer cameras and all that kind of stuff, this information is also updated for that also. So I mean, we can do whatever the committee wishes.
It sounds like although it isn't specified in policy that inflationary pressures are included in subsequent documents, would that be fair to say?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Member Drouet?
I just have a couple. The first one is, can staff confirm what the projected tax levy impact is currently for 2026? I know we're still early finalizing things, but is there a ballpark right now that we're looking at?
Heather?
I'll leave that to the mayor's report because we just got a funding announcement recently and assessment data from M-PAC. So we're going to leave that right now. I just, I didn't have time to pull a report together because we had, we just received the information. So it was published after the agenda. So I'm going to leave that for the mayor's report at the end.
Thank you. So that information is available. Further questions? All right. We have the resolution. All those in favor? And that resolution is carried. 6.1.4 C O affordability concerns. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to provide an informational update for the committee on concerns that have been raised about local taxation affordability. This is definitely not a new issue. I recall when I started with the town, I reviewed a letter from the 1980s that talked about this and selling alcohol in the town. So it was a piece of history for me. But it does come up cyclically within the community. Local affordability has been a foundational principle of a lot of work and efforts undertaken by this council and administration, as well as councils dating back to the early 2000s when the town had a significant amount of debt that they needed to clear out. It's quite easy to make broad negative statements about affordability, particularly in times when there's broader international issues that are really negatively impacting the lower and middle classes. And that's kind of, you, you see these issues raise up even if there isn't a direct correlation during that time. The data shows that Elmer really provides a high level of service in a manner that's in line with other municipalities. In particular, the communities of St. Thomas and Tilsenberg, being that they also provide urban levels of service. The town's also been very strategic in terms of planning for the future. This was done so that continual improvement would occur in the community, but not at the expense of affordability. The clearest examples of this are significant investments and growth that are occurring in residential and employment areas within the town. There have been other examples, such as the town's low debt levels, the current favorable life cycles of our core infrastructure, and the overall conservative financial approaches that we take, very much thanks to Heather's work with town staff. Elmer has been successful in attracting growth in a year when other municipalities are seeing stark declines in this area. Growth and assessment has been a key focus of our plan for long-term local affordability, given that we want to achieve some economies of scale related to our service levels. Part of this growth has been a focus on broad range of housing options to include affordable housing. This is really critical to local affordability as the percentage of incomes going towards housing or rent represents the far, the biggest impact on families, especially those in the low, low or middle class. So the household expenses are just gone through the roof and we understand that. The focus of all the town's efforts is to deliver incremental improvements, year over year, to residents without impacting affordability. So this is consistent with what we hear residents say that they want through our budget surveys. It's important to note that Elmer's different than communities that are predominantly rural and have slow growth, low service levels, and focus simply on austerity measures to deliver affordability. We're a community where people want to see ongoing incremental enhancements and local improvements. And growth supports the town's ability to pursue those enhancements in a way that can maintain local affordability. Staff are, however, just positioning council so that they can be responsive to the desires of residents. Ultimately, decisions around services and service levels are that of council. I believe this term in particular has been very responsive in engaging citizens and incorporating the desires of the community and their vision. If there's one thing I want to relay to the public, it's that you really can't equate the short-term, equate the short-term issues of the town having drawn down its reserves with the town being in a poor financial position. The town has drawn down our reserves to add significant new assets that better position us for growth. Those assets have a tangible value and the town is far better off having those assets, like the water tower or the lagoon upgrades, than we would be if we didn't have those and we had money in the bank right now. So we are in a good position because of those investments done by council. Elmer is in a strong position to have forward momentum. And although there are broader economic issues impacting Canada, where a lot of other municipalities are stagnant, we're positioned to come out of the stagnation quickly and almost at a running speed when, when these other municipalities are going to be playing catch-up. Elmer's strategically positioned to avoid future volatility and tax rates that may hit other municipalities that are underestimating future asset replacement costs or are currently providing large incentives to attract growth. So again, the town's financial approach is fiscally conservative and we're balancing the increased demands of the community against the pressures of affordability, not just on an annual basis, but with a long-term vision for the community. In conclusion, I really, I don't want to seem insensitive to the families that are struggling to make ends meet. Affordability will continue to be a priority for the town of Elmer. The issue facing the, the middle and lower class isn't directly attributable to the town. We're, we're dealing ourselves with the pressures of this global environment. Issues like inflation impact the municipality, too. So overall, though, the town has undertaken the work to place the community in the best strategic place, position possible. And this is done to provide council with more options to meet the needs and desires of the community, whether that's affordability or adding services in the future. But affordability will continue to be a critical component of any program or project that the town delivers. Sorry. With that, I'll try to answer any questions that council might have.
Before we have any questions, we have a mover and a second to receive his report, Member Chapman. You've had lots of opportunity. Can we share it? Okay. Member Rahi? Okay. Discussion regarding Andy's report. Member Drouet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Firstly, I want to thank C O Griselle for this report. I appreciate the intent to clarify the complexities of our tax system for both council and the public. That said, I do want to raise a few points and questions. I have two questions, particularly from the perspective of families and new residents who continue to express concerns about affordability and perceive tax fairness in Elmer. The report makes a case that our per capita taxation is below regional averages, but the numbers as presented may not feel as robust to residents. What most people see and what shapes the perception is their actual tax bill. When a family relocates to Elmer and their annual property tax bill is noticeably higher than it was in St. Thomas, Tilsenberg, or Malahide, that becomes their benchmark. They don't see mill rates or per capita data. They see the numbers on the invoice and the amenities in return. And speaking with local realtors confirms that those direct property tax comparisons are a common conversation point when people are deciding where to buy. I think we need to bridge the gap between technical data and real-world experience. And I would like to see a more public-facing comparison, something that shows what average families in Elmer pay versus nearby towns and what specific services or amenities they receive for that amount. So my first question is, would staff be able to bring that information back before council?
So we're talking about then trying to compare quantitative and qualitative data. There's no way to capture anecdotal data on how people feel. We, we have to look at the actual information that's publicly available in terms of our tax rate to, to make decisions. Individuals can buy a house that's $200,000 more in this community than the last community they lived in. They can come from a rural community with low services to, to a municipality with high. We don't control the individual assessed value of their property. And as we kind of outlined, one of the issues is the fundamental unfairness of the property tax system. So the property tax system is stuck at 2016 rates. It hasn't been updated. So you can't really get into that level of analysis without looking at what, like-for-like. It, it's almost impossible to find like-for-like. You don't have the same house in two municipalities that you can exactly equate to each other. And it's an issue that I've dealt with in other communities, too. I've, in the city of Hamilton, when I worked there, we constantly had people moving from Toronto, one of the lowest residential tax rates in the province because they have such a huge commercial and financial district that props up their, their tax base in Toronto. And they'd move to small communities and say, I'm paying twice the taxes in, in the city of Hamilton than I am in, in Toronto. So it, it's almost impossible to do that type of aggregated, detailed thing. What we can do is we can continue to make it a priority to work on affordability. And certainly, council can look at establishing service levels and, and making sure that you're consistent and affordable in, in what you do. That's, that's kind of where we can make tangible. But to, it, it's, it's almost impossible to take an individual anecdotal experience and derive data from it that, that is, can be broadly used.
Thanks, Andy. You had another question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to confirm, the answer is no, we can't do that, then. It's impossible, is what you just said, right? No?
Without, without getting every resident to, yeah, that, that you can't, you can't compare apples and oranges, essentially. If we had a bunch of houses that were exactly the same construction, if we had wartime construction and St. Thomas had bought the same houses from Sears and they had 100 of the same houses and we had 100 of the same houses here in Elmer and they were assessed at the same, then we could do an apples-and-apples comparison. But otherwise, that, that scenario doesn't exist. It's, it's a hypothetical problem.
Follow-up?
This is the second question. Thank you. So secondly, I want to ask about long-term fiscal resilience. The report speaks to growth and development as a key strategy for affordability, and that's valid. But I'm curious how we're insulating ourselves from potential market downturns. We've heard optimism about future power co-spinoffs. And while that potential is exciting, I think it's important to ask what our contingency plan is if those anticipated revenues or developments do not materialize as projected. So I'd like staff to comment on what mechanisms we have in place to stabilize the town's finances during an economic cooling period, especially given the service expectations that are increasing, not decreasing.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So I believe that the next M-PAC forecast is projecting about 4% growth, which, next year, which would be historic for the town of Elmer. It would be our, probably our largest single year of growth. We do have a number of developments that have a three-year sunset clause that have gotten to the point where they are shovel-ready in the ground. So I think even if there was a downturn with the market rates, a lot of those residential developments will still proceed to development. So there is a potential for that to occur. The, if the industrial or commercial development slows down here in town, there's no, no risk. We've paid off all of Aim Park. There's no direct impact. There's no bills. We'd like to move a couple of properties every year at Aim Park, but there's no urgency on the town to dispose of those assets.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Okay. Seeing none, with the conclusion of debate on this report, I would like to make a brief statement to address some recent public discussions related to the town's finances and the ongoing budget process. There has been a great deal of conversation in the community, particularly online, about the town's long-term financial planning and the library project. I believe it's important to clarify a few points for both council and the public. Social media postings suggesting that Elmer's property taxes will go up 10%, 20% or more because of the proposed library expansion, this is simply not true. No responsible council member would ever suggest or support such an increase. All of us are affected by property taxes, including those folks who live elsewhere but shop or do business in town. Elmer's strategic plan, which we just reviewed tonight, includes a projection for library construction in 2028 or 2029. This doesn't mean we're building right away. It simply means we're planning ahead. By that time, we should have a plan in place and the necessary plan built up to support the project, including reserves, pledges, grants, and donations when available. It's been mentioned that there aren't any grant programs available right now for library expansion, and that's true. But we also know we won't qualify for any future grants unless we have a shovel-ready plan. At this stage, we don't have that yet. We have a conceptual design that will still need to be refined, improved, and costed out. And honestly, none of us can project what funding programs may exist two years from now. Just this week, the federal government announced in 20, in its 2025 budget, which includes new commitments for community infrastructure, housing, and local partnerships. As a good reminder on how quickly funding opportunities can shift. A year ago, none of these programs were on the table. Two years from now, there may be entirely new ones that support projects like ours. That's why it's so important that we continue preparing and keep our plans ready to move when those opportunities arrive. Our staff are some of the best in getting grants approved. This fact has been acknowledged by the province. We are punching well above our weight. Yes, our reserves have come down. That was as planned, as, as part of responsible financial planning. Aim Park, the Lagoons, Elk Street, the Water Tower, all were able to happen because this council and previous councils as a whole planned for them and saved to fund them over a period of time. Elk Street was delayed two years until we could better afford to go ahead. If a homeowner needed a new roof but didn't have the cash available, would they not consider planting that roof and saving for it over time? Would you not expect that after paying for the new roof from your savings account, that the balance came down? Town reserves work the same way. We plan for major projects, save for them, and then spend when the time is right. In summary, the town's approach remains focused on responsible, long-term financial planning. These, the projects we discussed tonight and in the months ahead, whether roads, water systems, or community spaces, are part of a careful process that balances affordability with the needs of a growing community. I want to thank staff, the finance committee, and the community for their input through this process. Anything remaining? Or should we proceed to receive the report as information? We've received the report and we'll take the call for vote now. All those in favor of Andy's report? Thank you. And that motion is carried. Correspondents and updates? Seeing none, new business inquiries by members? Acknowledgement, someone like, sorry? Member Drouet, a question?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in the early summer, Elmer initiated discussions with our municipal partner regarding contributing to the cost of the outdoor pool. This was brought forward by a motion by Deputy Mayor Barber. And from my understanding, Malahide has responded seeking clearer expectations and financial figures. Can we get an update from staff about that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe we've been working on it, but I believe with the mayor's leadership that the issue will soon be resolved. So I, I expect that it should be resolved within the next couple of months.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else? New business? Seeing none? Consider an adjournment resolution? Moved by? Member Oslach, Member Chapman, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. We'll take a five-minute break before the beginning of council.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular council meeting of Wednesday, November the 5th, 2025. Roll call notes the absence. We have a moment of reflection and respect. Item 3.1, confirmation of the agenda.
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of November 5th, 2025.
Mover in second, Deputy Mayor Barber and Councilor Chapman. All those in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Declaration of pecuniary interest, are there any? There are no delegations in public meetings. Item 6, consent agenda.
That the November 5th consent agenda be received for information and the council adopts the minutes for the regular meeting of council held on October 15th, 2025.
Mover in second, Councilor De Rosier and Councilor Chapman. Any comments or questions on any of these? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Seven action items. Chief Administrator Officer, sorry, at our pledge policy, have a resolution?
That report CAO 46-25, respecting the pledge policy, Elmer Library Redevelopment Project be received as information, and that council approve the pledge policy and direct staff to proceed with measures to support fundraising.
Mover in second, Councilor Chapman and Councilor Oslach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have before council the draft pledge policy to support council's adoption of option one of the new library design. The pledge option will be particularly important over the next year. Following adoption, we'll work on a pledge agreement, which will require those making a pledge commitment to full payment upon the start of construction. We will also develop a webpage prior to the end of the year to officially launch the fundraising effort, so we're going to try to get that done as quickly as possible. In terms of pledges, we're suggesting a minimal amount of $1,000. This is not to deter lower amounts. It's simply to recognize that at this stage, we're looking for larger supports in principle for the project over the next year. Following the next council's endorsement of this project, we will begin another stage of fundraising, which will focus more on other options, including more modest donations, with everything of $25 or more receiving a taxable receipt. The pledges will also receive that taxable receipt, but it won't be until such time as payment is made. We will have this system set up when we launch the fundraising so that we can accept the cash. We will be able to accept the cash donations at the same time, but we can't refund those amounts. So, until the RFP for this project is awarded, we anticipate that the majority of the participation in fundraising is going to be through the pledges. There's some substantial recognition opportunities available within the pledge process. Any pledge of $3,000 or more will receive a plaque in the lobby area recognizing the contribution. Larger donations will be able to secure naming rights of a room or an area for a period of 20 years. Similarly, we have the ability to name the overall building or center. However, that outcome is somewhat more unlikely, but if there's any local philanthropist who wants to have their name live on in the legacy of the town of Elmer, here's your opportunity to come out. I know council has heard from local community groups that they're able to raise significant funds for this project, so we're really looking forward to the launch of fundraising this year, and we can't wait to see how much the local grassroots efforts can make over the next year to support this initiative. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions of council.
Thank you. Counsel. Counsel Ryan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just to clarify it for my simple brain, is the whole point of the pledge, so that way people can say that they're going to give money, but then if it doesn't happen, they can actually, they haven't given it, so that they don't have to worry about not getting it back like the cash donation. And what is actually binding someone to make sure that they go through with it so we don't think there's funding there, and then all of a sudden, it's not there? Because anyone can say they're going to do something, but unless if they actually hand write the check or give the cash, it's not real, in my opinion. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, good question. So, there will be a requirement, to your first point, sorry. Yes, it's to make a pledge for financing that would be payable when construction begins on option one only. So, it has to be, obviously, there might be design changes done by the council, but it has to be substantially that vision that council's adopted, and that's where the money would go to when construction begins. There will be a legal agreement that would be binding, that they will have to pay the funds and have to expect to hold it in trust, at least to some form, on the date of construction, and it would also be binding upon estates. So, we would have to, we'll have to arrange a process where we have that agreement made, and likely people will come in, although, community groups can make that, we'll have to arrange times for people to come in, sign the document, and we will witness it and give them a hard copy.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up through you, Mr. Mayor. And as far as the cash donations, what happens when people hypothetically give money for the library? Library doesn't go through. What happens with that money if it's non-return or non-refundable? What happens with those funds? Thanks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Good question again. So, the way that that reserve has been set up is that, and it will be clearly labeled on that component of the fundraising, is that those funds can be used for the library redevelopment or for maintenance rehabilitation to Old Town Hall. So, if those funds, because we can't return them after we issue a taxable receipt, we don't have the ability to do that, and also, our accounting practices, as Heather will tell me, doesn't allow us to return them. So, we need to take that money in, and we can't do it, but we will assign it at least at minimal to the repairs of Old Town Hall.
Counsel De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff for bringing this policy forward. I think donations should be a significant revenue source for this project, and I'm pleased to see that there's due diligence being applied to that objective. In saying that, given the scale of this project, I feel the current fundraising approach is not reflective. The following recommendations are intended to basically better align the pledge policy with the magnitude of the investment, maximize fundraising potential, and promote ongoing public confidence in the process. So, a couple of recommendations, I personally believe, and I would seek council's opinion, is increasing the room naming rights to a higher tier. I think $30,000 is relatively low in comparison to the scale of this project and the amount of it. And if there is only eight to 10 rooms, like I feel $1,000, or sorry, $100,000 would be more reflective for naming rights for rooms instead of the $3,000, or $30,000. For the name wall, same thing kind of applying. I think $3,000 is setting the bar fairly low. I personally would like to see that raised to a $5,000 or a $10,000. And creating overall tiers, so lead donor, principal room, sponsor, regular room sponsor, wall sponsor, et cetera, with the associated benefits and signage, so that way people can really see a clear criteria. And the other recommendation that I have for public transparency and confidence is on our website or wherever we're going to be offering this, that we have a visual fundraising thermometer bar showing the pledges versus our targeted amount, and I think that would really be a nice visual for residents to continue that transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I believe that once the website is set up, we will have all kinds of mechanisms to show how we are doing, and all bar and maybe other things, and certainly the names of people, if they wish to give their names, will be publicized as well. In terms of the amounts, I believe the $3,000 is just for the plaque. There is, the amount for rooms is higher, is it not?
Yes, so the $3,000 is just for the plaque, and then the room would be, room or area would be between 15 to upwards of $15,000. So, for a 20-year period, and that was to try to ensure that we didn't eliminate corporate sponsors from potentially coming forward as well. Just considering the nature of a building that will house a library, we didn't know if you wanted, council would want to have higher amounts for that, simply because you don't have the foot traffic necessarily that you would have in an arena or something like that, but certainly, it's up to council's overall vision. And council could certainly establish a fundraising target for it, but I think we're relying on the grassroots groups to drive a lot of the fundraising rather than have allocated to staff to do events related to fundraising. So, without providing additional resources, I don't know if we want to set it. I know previously, the last term set the amount at half a million dollars, which was a lot. I'd be happy if we got that much for this, but ultimately, it's up to council, and whatever council wants would be in the policy.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just to confirm, perhaps I'm wrong, but in this document, did it not state that there's roughly eight to 10 rooms that have naming rights?
Eight to 10 areas that would be different, some of them would be like a two-person study room, whereas there'd be other areas like the outdoor kind of pavilion or garden area, which would have a significantly higher amount, or the atrium that would back on to the town hall, which for $15,000, you wouldn't be getting that. You'd need a higher amount, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, I'm making these recommendations to hopefully encourage more donations to this, because in my opinion, if you have eight to 10 rooms and you're advertising naming rights for $15,000, it doesn't really hold like an elite status, really. Like, I mean, $15,000 in comparison to the 8.8 million this is going to cost is relatively low. And if you have eight rooms times $15,000, that's only $120,000 that you're, you know, putting out there for people to jump on, and I don't think it really elevates how prominent like a room naming right is. Like, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you guys. I'm not trying to do this as a negative. I think you're kind of selling yourselves short. I think you should be asking for more, especially for room naming rights, to generate more income and more donors to this project. So, that's my only other feedback for you. What you choose to do is up to you, but I really think we're selling ourselves short with-- with a $15,000 room naming right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think some of the, some of the rooms will be very different, and we really don't know how many rooms there's going to be right now, because we have to wait for the, you know, for the county to kind of look at how they'd like to lay out the library. But if council wishes to raise the room amount, might entertain a motion to do so. Counsel Rahi.
I think, through you, Mr. Mayor, but I think it makes sense to have different tiers of the room, like if a room's only 15 square feet, 20 square feet, whatever it is, then it's not the same rate as what a larger area is. So there should be different tiers of, of whatever the size of the room is for the amount of foot traffic. So there should be a big range in it. I mean, if it's, if it's a two-person, three-person study, that has to be worth more than 1,000 square foot area. Like, I think there should be different sections and different sizes and start somewhere, and hopefully you get a broader area or broader amount of people that, some people don't want to spend the high amount, but they want to, they want to name whatever after, after whatever. So I think there should be, there should be the opportunity for it to, for X amount of square feet, and the more square feet the room is, or the more foot traffic there is, the higher it should cost to be able to name it. That is my opinion.
Anyone else on this same track?
Same track. Could we, this document, it's a, it would come into place as it's written, but all documents are subject to revision. Would it be appropriate to have staff search out other municipalities that have done something similar as far as naming rights go, and just see what the range might be on a similar type build? Or have you already done that?
I didn't do, through you, Mr. Mayor, I didn't do a multiple review, but I looked at recent library naming rights and policies and fundraising. So that's generally where I got the $3,000 range to get a plaque in the lobby. There was some more discretion on naming, because they were considering a bit more corporate sponsorship, and what makes us interesting is, a lot of the other libraries that I looked at with the policy also had the ability for advertisement or marketing in the library, and I don't think we're going to be able to sell that to Elgin County, because they own the collections and the equipment. So there will be another component where we'll have to try to get Elgin County on board for the equipment donation side, but although I see in the staff report where I recommend 15 to 30,000, in the actual policy, it's 15,000 and above. So I'd say the policy does, if you do want to go, you could increase 15 to 20,000. I do know there was one small three or four-person study room that might not, somebody might, we might not get somebody, but I don't think there's, in the policy itself, there isn't an upper end. So we could work with groups once we see what comes in and encourage with the grassroots group that's doing the fundraising to seek out people for, you know, look for somebody who wants to donate 50 or 60,000 to have the atrium named after them. I think this policy would allow us to do that with council's direction.
Okay, does that kind of satisfy the questions? We could leave it up to people asking, you know, what the cost of these rooms are, and once we find out what kind of rooms we have as well, but I think it's important that the pledge mechanisms start right away. So we don't, I don't want to stall it for the purpose of having staff review it and coming back to council. So if we can leave the room amounts up to staff to kind of negotiate with the idea that, you know, 15,000 is pretty low, we want to start higher than that, right? Counsel Chapman.
Through you, Your Honor. The concern would be, is if we're so fortunate as to have many groups that want to be part of this, and we only have 10 rooms, and if the, the naming of the room starts at 13,000, what do we do with the other pledges? So by starting at a higher range, maybe groups would join together and name the, a room jointly. So there is other options, I think, but starting at, at the, it's 15,000, that that is a low number, hoping that we have much higher pledges.
Okay, good point. I'd like to point out, however, that if you're looking at the footprint diagrams that were presented, those are suggested, suggested layout. The actual layout of the library could be much different depending on what Elgin County wishes. So when that happens, we may have less than 10 rooms, we may have more than 10 rooms, but I'm getting the idea that council says, let's make sure we get all the money we can out of, out of the pledges. So we've got that kind of message, and at this point, at this point, I'm thinking that a lot of the pledges are going to be ones that are simply pledges to go ahead with this, you know, to do this, and the room stuff can be negotiated along the way, once we figure out what the rooms actually are. Is that satisfying, counsel? Okay. Any other comments? Counsel D. Rosie.
Can I just seek clarification about the suggestion for the visual fundraising bar so we can, so we, the public, can keep track of how many, how much in pledges is actually being considered for this project?
I have no idea what staff is thinking about it. Gunner, for our own.
Through the mayor to Counsel D. Rosie, we can do that.
Okay, so anything else? All right, seeing nothing else, we have a motion on the table, all those in favor, and that is carried. Thank you. Item 7.2, CAO Strategic Plan Update Resolution.
That report, CAO 45-25, respecting the 2025 to 2027 strategic plan update, be received for information.
Moving second, Counsel Chapman and Counsel Rahi. I don't see who's doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before council is our annual update of the strategic objectives. The town has closed out a lot of large strategic objectives and has progressed well on others. Residents often don't see the full picture of what's happening in the community. They may see a new section of sidewalk or a new condominium development, but often they miss the full scope or scale of what's occurring in town. So it's important to take some time to sing our own praises. Elmer stands out as a progressive municipality. We have a high level of completion on our strategic objectives that range from items such as improved citizen engagement and business system modernization to delivering on large-scale capital projects. We can see from our annual budget surveys that concerns around housing affordability are trending downwards in a positive fashion. A large part of this is that the town has been able to add a mix of housing options to the community quite quickly. As growth continues and more units are added, we anticipate that the local marketplace will self-regulate and affordability will increase. Staff are recommending this item remain as a strategic objective, but be decreased in importance. Similarly, our relationship with Elgin-St. Thomas Social Services has had a positive impact on homelessness. That organization now has an aggressive plan to end homelessness in the area within the next decade. The town's focus is now shifting from advocacy to ensuring local community groups have strong connections with social services and focusing on those that are transient homeless or often thought of as couch surfers, which are hard, a harder area to enumerate and need special attention specifically in rural areas. Staff are also recommending that the library be promoted to a double-A priority. This simply represents council's commitment to ensure that resolution of this issue occurs during the next term. The strategic objectives are something that the incoming council will review and consider very early on in their term, so if there's anything missing from them, and council would like consider, I'd suggest adding it. To summarize, I think a lot of people will look back on the current term as one that set the community on a new positive course and delivered substantial results on an astounding number of deliverables. In my experience, it's uncommon for a council to achieve so much within their term, so I do believe future councils will be singing the praises of your term for many years. However, it's important to acknowledge your accomplishments while you're all still in office, and with that, I'm able to provide an update on any of the strategic objectives or receive further direction from council.
Counsel? Counsel D. Rosie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for staff through you about the boundary adjustment, just wondering where the municipality is with the provincial facilitator.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. You're probably the best person to talk about it. I know Mr. Mayor is having discussions with Rob Flack on it, and we expect to hear back from the Minister of Municipal Affairs shortly.
Yes, I've had a few conversations with Rob Flack, and I'll leave it at that. He's working on it, so you'll hear as soon as I do. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, and that is carried. Thank you. I especially like the part, and he says that future councils will sing our praises, because so much has happened, and this council is very good, of the strategic plan update. 7.3, Manager of Parks and Recreation, we have a resolution.
That report, Recreation 08-25, entitled Commemorative Policy, be received for information, and that council approve the attached commemorative policy to replace Section 8 in memoriam requests in Bylaw 66-23, Tree Management Policy.
Moving second, Counsel O'Slash and Counsel Rahi. Susie.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to members of council. So this evening, I'm presenting this report, which recommends the approval of the new commemorative policy to replace for Counselor O'Slash, just respective Counselor O'Slash, just Section 8 of the memoriam request known as the Town Trees Management Policy, Bylaw 6623. Currently, requests for commemorative items have been guided by a brief section within the tree management policy. However, after review of this process and with, and through the guidance of the Parks and Beautification Advisory Committee, it became clear that a more structured, transparent, and accessible framework was needed. So the proposed commemorative policy before each night establishes that framework. It provides clear direction on the application process, the fee structure, and maintenance responsibilities. It introduces standardized designs for benches and plaques, includes a 10-year maintenance term, and ensures that all installations comply with accessibility and environmental standards, including the use of native Carolinian tree species. Importantly, the program is fully donor-funded, meaning there's no financial impact to the municipal levy. Fees set at $4,000 for benches and $1,000 for trees cover installation, plaques, and continuation to a dedicated maintenance reserve to ensure the program remains sustainable over the long term. This policy directly supports council's strategic pillars, planning for the future, and aligns with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which emphasizes accessible, well-maintained, and community-oriented public spaces. So in summary, this policy reviewed by the Parks and Beautification Advisory Committee formalizes a program that residents value deeply. It promotes transparency, consistency, and civic pride while ensuring our parks remain welcoming and well-cared-for. So I respectfully recommend that council approve the commemorative policy as presented, and with that, I thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Rahi.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Susie. So just so I'm reading this correctly, if I want to put a bench somewhere, it's going to cost me $4,000 plus HST, or it's going to cost me what it costs to put the bench in, plus $4,000 to maintain it later on down the line.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Rahi. $4,000 is purchase and installation of the bench, and it also bakes in a small reserve to maintain it for 10 years. So if it's vandalized or if the plaque's damaged within those 10 years of the lifespan of the bench, we're not going back to the original donor for replacement or removing the item.
Okay, that, I just, when I read it, I thought that if I wanted to put a bench in, I had to pay for the bench, install it, and then it was $4,000 plus HST and $1,000 a tree, but okay. Is that, does that price kind of line up where it should be at? It seems like a, like a lot of money for a small pad and a bench to sit on, but I'm also pretty cheap, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counsel Rahi. I, I share your desire to pinch a penny, so, yeah, the benches actually, breakdown, the benches are about $2,200, $2,300. The pad, we've priced out about $900. And then the, depending on the inscription, the plaque that, really, it's a small amount for the maintenance reserve, so we're really trying to align with what other municipalities are doing. When we were doing our research, we looked at Tem Center, Tilsenberg, there's a variety of different, the Parks and Beautification Committee provided lots of input into different, different municipalities to check out, so we did, and certainly wanting to make it affordable and accessible for folks to commemorate loved ones, loved ones or, you know, community groups, or, hope that helps.
Counsel O'Slash.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The benches I put at the Senate, cost me $3,000 each.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a pleasure to see this policy before council tonight, and I want to thank both staff for their time and commitment to this, as well as the Beautification Committee for recognizing the value of this initiative. This policy is something that I brought to the committee back in September of 2024, after seeing the impact that similar programs have in other communities like Port Stanley, Belmont, Norfolk, Tilsenberg, Tem Center, and Port Hope. We've also heard from residents that there simply aren't enough seating options throughout our downtown and trail system, so this policy responds directly to that feedback, improving accessibility and comfort while supporting community pride and connection. One question I do have for staff, and this is something that I asked when I brought the idea forward, is whether there's potential to expand this program beyond benches and trees to include other commemorative options, for example, picnic tables, bike racks, sidewalk planters, water filling stations, murals, or even park structures such as gazebos or pavilions. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel D. Rosie. Thank you for your kind words, and I'm excited about the policy, too. I think those options are, as we've discussed around the Parks and Beautification Advisory Committee table, I think they're great ideas. I think this is a launchpad to hopefully a really great initiative. I think it's directly responding to what we've heard from residents, so seating and accessibility, I think it's a really good place to start, and then absolutely, as mentioned in, in discussion with the previous policy, I think they're fluid and open to, open to change, and with the will of council, we can certainly, yeah, add, amend, yeah, anything within it, so, thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor, to Susie. What would be pretty neat is, is if we could ask Elgin and the welding shop and woodworking shop, if there's ever a way that they could manufacture the benches or whatever, bike racks, because they do have the ability to do it, a lot of the times with donated materials. If they're, I would, I think it would be neat to see kids build them safely and then them be put in, into the town, so, just popped into my simple brain. Thanks.
Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, and that is carried. Thank you. Item 7.4, Manager of Parks and Recreation, the Play Equipment Implementation Plan Resolution.
That report, Recreation 09-25, entitled Play Equipment Implementation Plan, be received for information, and that council endorse the priorities and implementation framework outlined in the plan to guide future playground renewal and capital investing planning.
Moving second, Deputy Mayor Barber and Counsel Chapman. Susie.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, and to members of council. I'm pleased, I'm pleased to bring this report for, to council again this evening, which introduces a play equipment implementation plan for council's information and endorsement. So this plan fulfills a key recommendation from the 2023 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which called for a comprehensive review of Elmer's playground facilities. It provides a clear, cost-effective framework to guide playground renewal, accessibility improvements, and future development as our community continues to grow. Once again, using in-house resources through consultation with the Parks and Beautification Advisory Committee, their guidance has been instrumental in informing and supporting the development of this plan. With regards to public engagement over the summer, staff conducted a playground community survey, both online and in person, which garnered 266 responses. which garnered 266 responses from residents, which was very encouraging, which was very encouraging to have that engagement. The feedback showed strong community support for playground renewal and accessibility. Over 80% of respondents supported adding amenities for older adults and teens. Two-thirds emphasized the importance of inclusive and accessible play, and residents identified Lyons Park, Kinsman Park, and Elgin Estates as top priorities for improvement for initial rehab. The results clearly demonstrate that our residents value safe, inclusive, and modern play spaces that serve multiple age groups and abilities. So using the survey findings in a playground improvement evaluation matrix you'll see within the plan. The plan identifies short-term capital priorities. In 2020, 25, there's an approved capital project for Lyons Park resurfacing. So I hope, if you haven't already, had a chance to go to Lyons Park and see the improvements. They're completed, and they look wonderful. Also moving forward, 2026, Kinsman Park, we're looking to have some resurfacing done there. So that, we're, we're looking forward to that. Moving along to then Elgin Estates resurfacing. And then 2027 to 2030, focusing on accessibility upgrades at Centennial Park, adding a new playground in this underserviced area south of, south of Elmer. So it really, it really speaks to making what we have safe and then building new. Making those improvements is important. So the framework within the plan will guide annual budget deliberations and align future investments with safety, condition, and community demand. The plan supports phased implementation through the capital budget and potential partnerships or grants without adding additional operating costs beyond just regular maintenance. So in summary, the Play Equipment Implementation Plan provides a structured, transparent, and community-driven approach to improving Elmer's parks and playgrounds. And endorsing, endorsement of this plan will ensure our investments are guided by evidence, community feedback, and long-term sustainability. So I respectfully recommend that council endorse the plan as presented. Thank you. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council. Councilor Chapman.
Through you, Your Honor. Thank you for that, Susie. And as part of the Parks Beautification Board, this is so exciting to see this coming forward and to see our parks improving over the last couple of years. It has been really awesome. The plans that we have coming forward should meet some of the needs of the, the community and just look forward to more beautiful parks. Thank you.
Council Rahi.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, to Susie. It, it's nice to finally see a plan for our parks that kind of makes sense because it is time. The one thing that is, I struggle with in my head is just spending $40,000 on a park to resurface it and then potentially in five years, losing that. The other thing that I struggle with is I'm very impatient, and I was really hoping that my kids would play on a new park. I know that's nobody's fault, but it's still. Thank you for the report, and it's nice to see something happening.
Anyone else? Seeing, seeing none, all those in favor? I'm sorry, did I miss you, Councilor De Rosier?
Yes, you did. Thank you, Mr.. Thanks for going back. I appreciate it. As a mother who uses these parks often, I'm really happy to see this plan coming forward. And I think it truly highlights the municipality's commitment to the quality and safety of our existing playgrounds. So I think that's something that families in Elmer have been hoping to see for a while now. So I just wanted to say that I fully endorse this, and I'm very grateful for this as well. Thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor? As carried. Thank you. Item seven point five, Director of Financial Services Quarterly Resolution.
That report Finance 20-25 entitled Quarterly Financial Summary Report be received for information.
Moving second, Council Rahi and Council Chapman. Heather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you and to members of council. I just really wanted to focus on some of the great news in the areas of this financial report, highlighting them as there's no concerns at this point for anything as of Q3. So revenues are up in the area of Old Town Hall, and I find this kind of interesting because I believe part of it's the social media campaigns. But I also believe that that barrier to insurance has also helped some of these people actually be able to rent it. So I wanted to note that. And Andy has alluded to, you know, our successful building applications and permits and, and housing coming online. So I just wanted to note for council that building permits have steadily been increasing in the town. Our neighbors, in some cases, only have one or two permits. I don't know how many permits we have, but we've literally doubled our revenue in this area. Almost, almost $300,000 when I just ran it yesterday. So as of this report, it was a little bit less. But so there, we're very fortunate to have these, including major renovations. So new businesses, new builds, you know, substantial infill development. So that infill development that the planning team and the development team is focusing on, you know, even while affordable housing units are becoming exempt, and we're, we're trying to chase our tail on that, these infill lots are actually helping. And we're not adding additional headcount. We're still driving by the, you know, the sidewalk to plow the snow. We're just now doing it in, with a lot that's been infilled. So if anybody's, you know, thinking about how vacant lot impacts our residential property tax, it's substantial. So I just wanted to note those, those really good things for council. And I'll try to answer any questions from the report that I have in front of council.
Thank you, Heather. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. The last count that I had, Heather, 209 permits.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? As carried. Thank you. Items eight, new business in matters of urgency. None. Number nine, reading of bylaws and proceedings they're on. Resolutions.
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw 64-25, being a bylaw to amend bylaw 33-21, being a bylaw to adopt a flag policy and delegate authority to staff under the municipal flag policy, bylaw 65-25, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on October 15th, 2025.
Moving second, Deputy Mayor Barber, Councilor Chapman. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? As carried. Thank you. Item 10, inquiries by members. Council De Rosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rural Ontario Municipal Association, Roma, delegation requests are now open and will close November 18th. So this is our last meeting of a council prior to then. I just wanted to know if council has any matters or priorities they would like to bring forward for discussion with the province through delegation requests.
Andy, do we have anything?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, we, we did kind of touch on this on October 15th, and I think it was a long meeting, so I didn't. We didn't get too much into the report at that time. But certainly, it's up to council on whether or not you want to delegate. The past things we've delegated on have been the boundary adjustment. I do think that we're, I don't know. We're very fortunate to have such a close in with the Minister of Municipal Affairs. So I don't know if we need to do another delegation, if that would help, or if we just can rely on the mayor to continue to talk with him. Another option that if council wanted to, I was talking with the chief of police, and he'd certainly be willing to go talk to the Ministry of the Attorney General with us about the troubling trend that the ministry bonusing OPP but not providing the same considerations to local police services. So you might have known that the funding that went to OPP member municipalities last year as well, this year, the province has indicated that they're going to put an 11% cap on OPP policing costs for all those municipalities as well. And the province has also recently funded, solely funded, an OPP headquarters with no impact to a local municipality on their taxation. So there is certainly larger concerns about equality and unfair practices going on in the province to support their own policing service and not have a level playing field for small ones. So I know the chief of police has been making kind of his own inroads with his Chiefs Association, but if, if council wanted to, we could do that. The other one that we would consider was the Health and Safety Water Enabling System Grant. The only reason why it suggests that it might not be beneficial for council to do that is the application, the application deadline for that grant was this spring, and there's a June 2026 construction start date. So I think we're all very surprised that there hasn't been any announcements yet by the province for that grant. But I can't foresee that if they're expecting that you need to have a shovel in the ground by, by June, that they're, they're not going to announce before the end of the year. So, so I do think there's a high likelihood that they'll likely already have announced by the time of the Roma conference. But certainly, it's, it's at the discretion of council on. And I know you probably don't recall the report from October 15th, but it was kind of on the fence of whether or not council wanted to do it.
Thank you, Andy. Before we kind of consider whether we want to do this or no, I don't know how many people wish, how many councillors wish to go to Roma. Do we have any people that wish to go? Do you have any councillors that wish to go to Roma at this point? Council De Rosier, you're.
Just reminding council on October 15th, I did state that I am going.
Yeah. Again, just wanted to double, make sure that we have one, anyone else going? I'm certain I could go if, if council wished to send a delegation. The delegations that were mentioned, I'm really, you know, had the same feeling as Andy about this. I don't think the boundary adjustment is probably a very productive one for a delegation. The OPP one certainly is something that rankles me as well because, you know, we, we have our own police force, and municipalities with their own police force are not getting a cut from the province, whereas the OPP are certainly something that, you know, I'd like to remind the, the province about. I'm not sure that, you know, they certainly know they're doing that. I don't know the need reminding. So I don't know how productive that delegation would be as well. So up, you know, up to council. How do you feel about sending delegations to council? Because I'm, I'm kind of on the fence on that. I will go if you feel strongly that we need to. But other than that, I wouldn't. Council De Rosier.
So just for clarification, I, I agree that the other ones don't really seem necessary. The one with the Attorney General, though, I think would be interesting. Would, what clarification I'm looking for is whether or not, do we think, staff think it would be beneficial for Police Chief John Stone to come as well and be part of that delegation? That's, I think that's the first clarification I would like.
Certainly, we would ask him if we wanted to do that. But, you know, certainly we'd, I think he would want to go, but.
I think, I think that one would be, it'd be, it'd be worth it. Like I, I personally have a good standing with Attorney General Doug Downey. So I think, I'm, I'm confident to do it with Kyle. If he would like to come as well, that's also welcome. But I think it's something that, why not, right? Especially if it's something that our community and our police force are passionate about. Why not open up that dialogue with the province, right?
Okay, so do we have a motion from council that we should ask for that delegation? Okay, Council De Rosier and Councilor Chapman. Insuring council, the, insuring staff that, to ask for the delegation with the Attorney General? Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Any other inquiries by members? Statements and committee reports. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. I have several. A reminder to the public of the Police Chief's Public Information Meeting tomorrow night, Old Town Hall, six to eight.
It's here.
Oh, it's here? I stand corrected. It's here. Okay. On behalf of the Elgin Area Primary Water Board, as chair, I was, I contacted the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade, and the Ministry of Environmental, Environment and Parks regarding a upcoming challenge of the, the Water Board to potentially have to expand the water treatment plant to the tune of $400 million, which is, none of it is included in the, the budgets as we speak. The, the need for that amount of expenditure is solely because of PowerCo and the expansion of the industrial lands in and around St. Thomas. And the challenge being that the income from the, from the water is solely provided by the end user. In other words, the, the budget is divided by the, the capacity, the, the water usage of each of the communities, and the water rate is the sole source of, of income. There are no provincial grants at this particular time for expansion. And $400 million in anybody's environment is a lot of money. Today, I had a interview with the CBC and may have another one tomorrow, encouraging the province to step forward and help the communities bear with this challenge. Further, the, the Water Board at the recent meeting passed its 2026 budget with a operating budget of $17,490,000 plus $3,160,000, all within the projected 3.5% water rate increase that was in the, the five-year budget plan. Further to the, the remarks that I just made, I'd just like to make a personal comment that members of council and the public are certainly entitled to their own opinion. The public at the last council meeting were given the opportunity to state their views. Members of council, and by extension, their families, are expected to have a higher standard of behavior. Our Code of Conduct states that profanity, aggressive behavior during the public meeting is simply not acceptable, and especially because of a relationship with a member of council. For a member of council to justify that.
Point of order for a second here.
Simply stating.
Point of order, Mayor. Point of order. This is a point of order. Discussing anything about a private citizen or a family member of this, of members of council is highly inappropriate. I would ask council that the chair direct that accordingly, please.
Can you continue without mentioning names here, Mr. Deputy Mayor Barber?
Yes, I can. It is my opinion that a public apology is warranted. Thank you.
We have any other statements from Council De Rosier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question regarding the business that Deputy Mayor brought up regarding the Water Board with the Ministry of Environment and Infrastructure. If this is a concern that our municipality and our municipal partners are experiencing right now, and if we're trying to get it on the radar of the province, while I, I appreciate the efforts of going through the CBC, this would be something that would be a great opportunity to delegate to the province about at Roma. So I think it'd be worthwhile approaching our municipal partners on this, like if it's St. Thomas, any of the other municipalities. If we have members from those municipalities attending Roma, I think it would be extremely beneficial and a opportunity lost if we don't to partner together collaboratively and approach the ministry united together and get this on their radar for real. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council O'Slash.
Mr. Mayor. The remembrance, remembrance day serves. So we'll be held at Spring 12th and a quarter after nine. And in Elmer, the quarter through 11.
Very good. Thank you. We'll see you there. Council Chapman.
Through you, Your Honor. On what Council De Rosier said, I think that that's not a bad idea.